Hello and welcome to the Monday, July 18th, 2022 Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on July 14, 2022, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Would please take role.
Mr. Gillette. Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Mr. Kidd.
Here.
Ms. Lonning-Bader.
Here.
Ms. Nurse. Mr. Oliver. Mr. Rue.
Here.
Ms. Chuhio.
Here.
And Mr. Marini.
Here. We have a quorum. All right, and I'll have a motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Where is the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provide that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of the meeting, of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 70 of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough, in the County of Somerset, and the State of New Jersey, as follows: One, the matters to be discussed are illegal update and personnel matters; Two, the matters discussed in the executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we will be back approximately 7:30. Thank you. Hello and welcome back to the Monday, July 18th, 2022 Hillsborough Township Board of Education. We are now back from executive session. If we could take role.
Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Mr. Kidd.
Here.
Ms. Lonning-Bader.
Here.
Ms. Nurse. Mr. Oliver.
Here.
Mr. Rue.
Here.
Ms. Chuhio.
Here.
And Mr. Marini.
Here. We have a quorum. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'd like to acknowledge the correspondence is listed, small this month, small list. All right, and we will move on to committee reports. Do we have any to review? Mr. Kidd?
You go first.
The Education Committee met just in the past few days, well, met on Tuesday last week. I remember it was Tuesday or Wednesday this week because we had a scheduling. We mainly focused, our first items were policies we, we like reviewed and are doing some of the first readings of, the BOE website accessibility policy, the Ever Student Succeeds Act policy, the policy for ID cards, and then the new policy regarding student journalism. Regarding student journalism, there was some important discussion regarding that, to make sure that any regulation put in place following the implementation of new policies and would follow proper procedures, and there was no issues there. We also abolished the policy in consequent regulation for school-sponsored publications as a policy that's being replaced by our student journalism policy. After that, we moved on to social-emotional learning. There were lengthy questions regarding, mainly not social-emotional learning itself, but some of the varying resources adjacent to what was being used for the social-emotional learning program. It ended up become, we ended up coming to the conclusion that social-emotional learning wasn't a problem, it was just going to be moved forward, presented to the board. And then our last item was going over the health and PE curriculum. We did not bring that to the board today, and will be continued discussions until the next board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd. Mr. Hille?
Thank you. I'm reporting for Mr. Gillette for the Operations/Finance Committee. So we discussed in Operations on July 7th, a little bit earlier, and the first topic of conversation was our student accident policy insurance, that we are actually going to be extending it, bringing a small additional cost of $6,000 per year that would cover athletes who need physical therapy as a benefit for our students. The committee recommends that that is, that we add this coverage. There was discussion about a prospective Eagle Scout project regarding outdoor classroom at Sunny Mead, and that project is under review by the business office per process. And the Triangle HSA generously donated $43,000 to the district, and that project is on tonight's agenda for acceptance. Right? Okay. Thought I saw it. Finally, there was, not finally, there was some discussion about water testing for lead, and I believe that those reports are on the district website. Awesome, okay. There was discussion about the, should I report on this? The 2015-2016 Honeywell ESIP project, that's a sore spot. So there was some discussion about that. And then also some continued discussion with the Hillsborough Township Committee regarding building use, and that continues to be discussed. And finally, also on tonight's agenda, we will be appointing a treasurer of school monies so that we will have an extra person to do that. And also, actually, I also have municipal lines report to report on, which is, we met on July 8th, and the main thing that I wanted to let the public know is that the high school student assistant counselor, summer hours are from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Ms. Balaguer is Tuesdays and Wednesdays in July, and Mr. Polardi is Wednesdays and Thursdays in July, and that the last two, and also the last two weeks in August. And that is open to all high school students and even rising, right, rising middle schoolers, maybe even middle schoolers, I'm not sure. But definitely rising ninth graders, for sure. And that completes the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hille. Mr. Oliver?
Thank you, Mr. Marini. The Human Resources Committee met on July 13th. We reviewed unaffiliated salary adjustments, which will be at the next board meeting. We reviewed recommendations for a new high school principal. We looked at some of the overviews on placement guide, that's more information to follow. We talked about vacancies and the information coming in on the exit data. We'll have another follow-up meeting with the union, solve some problems, and try to look at some ways to fill those gaps of vacancies that are coming up. We talked about an ad hoc committee that we're going to form to look at athletic fees, and I think Mr. Rue decided he was going to chair that athletic committee. I think we might have nominated you, Mr. Rue, but it's something we're going to be establishing at the next HR meeting, and we'll look to bring some consistency to those athletic fees. And that was our meeting.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Oliver. And the Governance Committee did not have a quorum this month, so we have no recommendations coming forward out of that meeting, and no formal meeting minutes. All right, thank you all. And then we're going to move on to the Acting Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Marini. Good evening. Before I begin my social-emotional learning presentation, I'd like to share some important information. The National Suicide Prevention Lifeline is now 988. 988 has been designated as the new three-digit code that will route callers to the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. This dialing code became available to everyone across the United States on July 16th, 2022. Please note that the 1-800-273-TALK number, you may be familiar with, will continue to be available. I am pleased to announce that graduation for the class of 2023 will again be held in Jersey Mike's Arena at Rutgers University on Thursday, June 22nd, 2023, at 3:00 p.m. Congratulations to Hillsborough students who attend Somerset County VOTEC and participated in the Skills USA National Leadership and Skills Conference in Atlanta, Georgia in June. Arnav Khanna Rohil Singh Ver Trevetti earned a gold medal in the Quiz Bowl, and James Marvitz earned a silver medal in criminal justice. Great job, we are very proud of them. Okay. So as a response to the board's request to present social-emotional learning to the community, this is the presentation for tonight. It is also attached to the board agenda for those who want to reference it at a later time or follow along at home. So, social-emotional learning is the process through which young people and adults acquire and apply the knowledge, skills, and attitudes to develop healthy identities, manage emotions, and achieve personal and collective goals, feel and show empathy for others, and establish and maintain supportive relationships, and make responsible and caring decisions. There are five components which I'll go through. The goal is to help students develop proficiency in each of these competencies so that they can develop their whole selves, if you will. So one of which is self-awareness, which is recognizing one's emotions and values as well as one's strengths and challenges. And the bullets on the right identify the types of things that are focused when we're focusing on developing self-awareness. Self-management is managing emotions and behaviors to achieve one's goals. Social awareness is showing understanding and empathy for others. Responsible decision-making is making ethical constructive choices about personal and And relationship skills are forming positive relationships, working in teams, and dealing effectively with conflict. The purpose of promoting social-emotional learning and equity in education is to make sure that all students in the classroom feel connected to the school, the curriculum, and the community. Social-emotional learning is focused on assisting students in managing relationships and their emotions to support their learning in the classroom and to support their mental health. We want all students to feel respected for who they are, and for students to understand and appreciate the differences they all bring to the conversations in the classroom. With the challenges of learning during a pandemic, the recent tragic mass shooting events, and our past history of having students die by suicide, it is critically important to help students feel connected to the school, to their peers, and to their emotional and mental health. Disconnection leads to isolation, and isolation can lead to tragic consequences. Developing social-emotional learning competencies supports students in learning to cope and deal with their stress and worries, helps build their character, and promotes a safe and positive school climate. I'm going to leave this up for a minute. Social-emotional learning is not CRT. Our comprehensive health and PE curriculum is not CRT. Our social studies curriculum is not CRT. As per New Jersey Statute 18A 35-4.7, there has been and still remains the option for parents to have their children excused from instruction in health, family life education, or sex education when it is in conflict with his or her conscious or morally or religious beliefs. Parents need only send in their child's principal, send in to their child's principal and teacher a signed statement requesting exclusion. In response to concerns regarding comprehensive health and physical education curriculum, the revised curriculum is currently in the review process and will be posted on the website, as all our curriculum is once adopted by the board. It should be noted that the currently posted curriculum was updated in 2020 to include the 2020 standards, the source of recent concern. As such, our teachers have been teaching these standards in a great appropriate manner since then. Our teachers care deeply for our students and have great respect for the parent-teacher relationship in the learning process. Parents are informed regarding teaching and learning and have had the right and will continue to have the right to opt out as explained. Please do not assume ill intention on the part of the teachers or the district. I would also like to take this opportunity to speak to some misrepresentation of my character in the recent past. While the statements being spoken at board meetings regarding me ending dialogue in an ongoing conversation were true, they were taken out of context, and it recently came to my attention that my lack of response in the matter, which was intended to be respectful of the opinion being expressed, was taken as the intent to silence the concerns. The reality is the concerns were unfounded, and I provided evidence as such. The concerns were grounded in what ifs, not what actually takes place in the classroom. When the request to provide information that was publicly available took three weeks to compile, at a time when I was completing reports required by the state to procure an account for the ESEA funding which provides services to our students, and when the accusations became offensive to our teachers, who give every student a voice in the classroom and do not tell children that they are bad, I ended that particular conversation. When the request for information came at the expense of the students, I ended that dialogue. When the assumptions and the assertions in the correspondence became accusatory of mal-intent by teachers and the district without any evidence, I ended the dialogue as those assumptions were offensive and groundless. I am, and our teachers are, devoted to our students. We teach them to be thinkers, to question, to engage in respectful conversation with their peers, to value their differences, to be kind to one another, and to have and use their voice. Thank you. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, we will continue with the agenda. Nine, policies and regulations requiring annual review, so this is not a non-voting item, but the following policies and regulations require annual review by parents, staff, and students where applicable, and the policies are listed below with the linkable links. All right, and we have a motion to approve the minutes. 10 dot 1, motion to approve executive session minutes. 10 dot 2, motion to approve public meeting minutes. 10 dot 3, motion to approve executive session minutes. 10 dot 4, motion to approve public meeting minutes. Can I get a first and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions on the meeting minutes listed? No? All right, so we'll take the poll.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Oh, I apologize, I think I need to abstain from the 27th.
Okay.
So I, for me, it's yes for both 13th, but not 27th.
Thank you.
Ms. Lonning-Bader?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Ms. Chuhio?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini?
Yes. Motion passes. All right, so we will now move on to the first public comment session. We very much welcome input from the public. During board meetings, there will be two 30-minute periods of time that the meeting will be open for public comment. Members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. During the first public comment period, members of the public may comment about items that are listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district. As per Bylaws 0167, before you state your comment, you will be asked to provide your name and address. There is a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of the public employees encompassed therein do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. So for this first session, if you are going to make comment, please identify the action agenda item to which you are speaking before you begin comment.
Good evening. Good evening, Stefania Lockwood, Millstone River Road. I got a phone number, I'm so bad at this, I apologize. It's the one about the interim transportation director.
Which one is that?
Sorry, I apologize. Um, here we go, 13.1.
Okay, thank you very much.
13.1 and 13.2. So first of all, I just want to take a moment and just recognize Ms. Bennett. I only dealt with her, encountered her, I should say, dealt with her with a negative tone. I only encountered her once, and it was extraordinarily positive. She was very concerned about my child's experience regarding bullying on the bus, which I brought to the board before, and she said in as many words that she did not want my child to experience that. So that's a, that's a really dedicated employee that's retiring, and I just want to congratulate her and thank her. Regarding the interim position, I think I've also mentioned that, funnily enough, my dad is a bus driver, a school bus driver specifically. So I have insight into that industry, in a strange coincidence. I sent my dad our listing for the position, because my dad doesn't want to be a bus driver anymore, and he said, "Are you kidding me? Edison has four people to do that one job description." And I looked, and he's not kidding. Edison, supervisor of transportation, administrative secretaries, quotes, contracts, subscription athletics, is one person. VOTEC, employee records and subscription busing is another person. Special units busing out of district, English language learner, aids, invoicing, and quotes is a different person, and all districts, special units, also English language learner, athletic buses, and quotes. So a little bit of overlap between those four individuals, but call it a supervisor, and you could say realistically it's probably three people. And we have one, and we can't get somebody because we want to pay them, probably if I had to guess, less than what Edison is offering and what our surrounding districts are offering. So given the history that I've seen in this district with how, quite frankly, atrocious busing was last year, maybe it's time to consider that we expand our transportation office from a transportation manager, supervisor, to a transportation department, an office with people that have individual responsibilities, and that we pay what they're worth to do what they do for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments on the action agenda?
Stephen Strauss, Troop 186, LifeSCAM. I wanted to address from the committee report about the Eagle Scout project was submitted to the Finance Committee. As to what state of approval that project is in, coincidentally, I am the one who submitted that project, and that's, as a person, I have found that I'm on a very tight deadline to get this completed. If possible, I would like to meet with the representative from the Finance Committee from tonight, and possibly you, Mr. Marini. Post the meeting, see if we can figure out specifics. If that's possible, I would appreciate it.
All right, any other comments on the action agenda? All right, so we will now move into the action agenda.
Okay. The Acting Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the education agenda as follows: 12.1 through 12.10, motion to approve professional travel-related expenses; motion to affirm the superintendent's harassment, intimidation, and bullying determination for the attached cases; motion to approve the overnight trip; motion to approve the affiliation agreement with New York University Steinhardt School of Culture, Education, and Human Development; motion to approve curriculum writing and common assessment development; motion to approve staff for summer individual and group counseling; motion to approve staff for ELL summer program; motion to approve policies for first reading; motion to approve policy and regulation to be abolished; and motion to approve policy for second reading.
Can I get the motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion by the board on the, on the action agenda?
I just had a quick question.
Sure.
Regarding 12.4, the affiliation with NYU, I just want a clarification, is that they're going to be sending students, like, placement into the district?
That's so, yeah, we have to enter into an affiliation agreement so we can accept their student teachers, or clinical interns, or staff.
That's what I thought, I just wanted, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Bader. Any other questions? All right, we'll take role.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lonning-Bader?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Ms. Chuhio?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini?
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you very much. The Acting Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the Human Resources Agenda 13.1 through 13.15 as follows: Motion to approve resolution for the interim transportation supervisor; motion to approve retirements and resignations; motion to approve revised summer athletic camp stipends; motion to approve revised employment contract, 2022-2023; motion to approve a contract change; motion to approve transfer or change in assignment; motion to approve leaves of absence; motion to approve appointments for 2022-2023; motion to approve the treasurer of school monies; motion to approve assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction, I guess, contract, July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023; motion to approve the addendum to the Acting Superintendent contract; motion to approve school business administrator/board secretary contract, July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023; motion to approve extended school year program staff; motion to approve child study team, summer work; and motion to approve policies for second reading.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion by the board?
Oh, I was just going to point out that obviously, it's partially a personal issue, so we can't really discuss anything, but in terms of the nature of the position of transportation supervisor in here versus Edison, one of the factors to consider is the fact that both Edison's enrollment and total town population is more than twice that of Hillsborough, but obviously, there's always discussions to be had as to the nature of the district's internal structure, so that's all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kidd. Any other comments by the board? All right, seeing none, we'll move to role.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lonning-Bader?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Ms. Chuhio?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini?
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you very much. The Acting Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the operations agenda 14.1 through 14.12 as follows: Motion to approve monthly bills; motion to approve lease agreement proposal with UBS; motion to approve professional services agreement with Summit Management Solutions; motion to approve professional services proposal for interim transportation supervisor; motion to approve professional services contract with the Canopy Tree for 2022-2023 school year; motion to approve contracts with the State of New Jersey Commission for Blind and Visual and Visually Handicapped; motion to approve settlement agreement; motion to approve settlement agreement; motion to approve out-of-district placements for the 2022-2023 school year; motion to accept donations; motion to approve disposal or sale of obsolete items; and motion to approve policy and regulation for second reading.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion by the board? All right, seeing none, we'll take role.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lonning-Bader?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Ms. Chuhio?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini?
Yes, motion passes. All right, we're going to move on to common comments from the board public. We very much welcome input from the public. During board meetings, there will be two 30-minute periods of time that the meeting will be open for public comment. Members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district, as per Bylaws 0167. Before you state your comment, you'll be asked to provide your name and address. There is a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public comment, our public forums are not structured as question and answer sessions, but rather offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of public employees encompassed therein do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session.
Good evening. My name is Joyce Eldridge Howard. I live at 75 Weber Avenue. I, first, I'd like to commend you for forming an ad hoc committee to look out for the athletic fees, but I'm looking at the hirings, the new hirings you have here. You have 11 teachers. I've been on the board, as you know. I've been on the board, as you know. I've served an unexpired term. And I saw time and time again, when there were new hiries, I never saw anyone of color. And I see on this list, I don't know who the people are, or the teachers who applied, or the administrators, or the supervisors. But you know, I'm tired of always being the only one. I grew up in Westfield. I was always the only one. I think it's time, here we're in 2022, I think it's time that we look a little deeper, a little harder, and find other staff people, other people who are educators and that would apply to this district. I don't know how hard you're looking, but you have to look a little bit harder. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening, Reverend Rodney Williams, 101 Everett Close. According to the 2020 census, 35% of Hillsborough is now non-white. I participated in both the in-person and virtual focus groups hosted by Hazard Young &amp; Associates, and much of what I shared with them is included verbatim in the superintendent profile. If you check the recordings, you'll see that my words are in both the section headers and the bullet points. A strong educational leader, a courageous leader, a relationship builder, an exceptional communicator, as well as several of the bullets. That included inspires trust in his approachable presence, professional and collaborative, in interactions with students, teachers, staff, board, parents, and community members. Demonstrates resolve in facing challenges and the ability to navigate complex situations, develops and maintains professional, collaborative, and respectful relationships with all stakeholders based on exemplary experience and a strong set of core values. Works to unify and engage community that supports public education, seeks input prior to making decisions, communicates the rationale behind decisions and stands firm, and communicates regularly, clearly, and concisely in a way that engages and values all stakeholders. As I said, take a look at the recordings, and you will see that these are my words. So imagine my surprise when I couldn't find a single mention of any of the several mentions that I made regarding the need for the new superintendent to be able to relate across diverse communities and have experience with diversity recruitment. Again, fully one-third of the population of this town is now from underrepresented ethnic groups, and somehow, any mention of hiring a superintendent who can address the concerns of these communities was omitted. So please explain to us how that happened and what will be done to ensure that this glaring error be corrected, especially since on the search firm's own website, they offer a package specifically designed to source diverse candidates. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
My name is Tiffany Neal at Six Cedar Hill Terrace. I am here tonight to advocate for healthy school hours for Hillsborough students, starting in the fall of 2023. As you know, extensive research shows that starting both middle and high school at 8:30 a.m. or later improves mental health, physical health, and academic achievement among teenagers. Due to shifts in the biological clock during puberty, teens naturally fall asleep later and wake up later than both children and adults. By starting Hillsborough High School before 8:30 a.m., we are preventing our teens from getting the eight to 10 hours of sleep they need to be healthy and successful. I appreciate that the board committees have started to discuss options for implementation. Although the search for a new superintendent is a priority right now, please also keep healthy school hours on a front burner. Switching to a later start time will take extensive planning, especially for transportation and athletics, so it's important to be working on it now. As I mentioned in April, new legislation has been proposed to set a minimum high school start time of 8:30 across New Jersey. Although the legislation would take effect in the fall of 2024, Hillsborough should lead the way with healthy school hours by the fall of 2023. To be clear, the status quo has been hurting our kids for years. The great news is that there are a variety of solutions that work for school districts looking to make the change, and many districts have done it without incurring additional costs. We have waited too long to do what's right for Hillsborough students. It's time to take action so that our students can start reaping the many benefits of healthy school hours in the fall of 2023. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Jane Stats, 101 Devonshire Port. First of all, I agree with what Ms. Eldridge Howard and Reverend Williams said regarding our diversity in our hiring, especially for the sake of our students, and that's what this is all about. When we have a diverse population, it's good that students can see people that they can identify with and aspire to be like. I also want to talk about the issue regarding the National Honor Society of the high school. There's a discussion towards the end of the June 13th board meeting about the difficulty of filling the positions of the National Honor Society advisors and the faculty council. The discussion focused on the stipends and suggestions regarding the stipends. As a former member of the NHS faculty council, I want to clarify that the role of the faculty council is to go through all of the applications to select those students who satisfy the requirements of NHS. The full team of the advisors and the faculty council is necessary to ensure a thorough, fair, and consistent implementation of the selection process. Anyway, even though the focus was on the stipends, the real reasons behind the difficulty of filling those NHS faculty positions have little to do with money. When Mr. Rue alluded to the issue of cheating, he was on the right track. Recent NHS advisors told me that there were cheating incidents. The manner in which these incidents were handled by various groups of people created problems for the advisors and the faculty council. Cheating in relation to the NHS is a serious matter, considering the middle name of the National Honor Society. I encourage any further exploration of this matter to include reaching out to the primary sources of information, which would be teachers who are recent NHS advisors and faculty council members. This NHS issue may be representative of the problems regarding teacher retention and low morale of the remaining staff. The baseless conjectures, creative extrapolations, decision-making process, communication process, and investigation regarding this matter are symptomatic of many problems in our district and the Hillsborough community. Thank you.
Lisa Gabor-Balas Huffleen in Hillsborough. I have a couple of quick comments. First, in case you have not heard, the planning board will be hearing the M&amp;M developers' proposal on Thursday, July 28. Please take careful look at their community impact statement and the revenue and costs associated with the homes they are building. The proposal says that the development will bring a surplus to the district. It will not, because we cannot raise taxes more than 2% of our current budget, in general terms. Please keep working with the township to ensure that there is an adequate plan to fund facilities for increased enrollments from development. Secondly, to our communications committee, please consider highlighting on the district's website Bob Fensters, he's a teacher in the high school, his achievement of being one of the five teachers recognized nationally. Our teachers would love to see a peer being recognized for his hard work. Parents, students, and community members would see it as a search for things on our website. And a future potential superintendent would see that we have this caliber of teacher, as well as that we support and admire our teachers. There are at least two articles that I can send to you that you might be interested in just posting. Finally, I'm not sure if I missed this, but I feel in past years I have heard about announcements regarding contact with our legislators, and I feel like I have heard in the grapevine that maybe we have received $1 million in infrastructure, but I don't know if there's been anything else in the works to help Hillsborough. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening, Stefania Lockwoods, Millstone River Road. Dr. Faltri, thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your strong, confident statement regarding what you've experienced from the community, regarding discussions that, quite frankly, have been encouraged and began months ago with members seated on this board. October 21st, I think it was. Sorry, November 8th. And I sent this to the board in email, and I'm just going to read you what I wrote. "Mr. Oliver stated in the November 8, 2021 meeting, 'Mr. Gillette and I have talked a lot about critical race theory. We're told it's not being taught in the class, but it keeps popping up its ugly head.'" Do you believe her now, Mr. Oliver? How about April 13th, when I sent you the NJEA statement titled "Disinformation Alert: Politically motivated special interest organizations and partisan politicians are actively spreading false information pertaining to New Jersey's comprehensive health and physical education standards, which were revised and adopted by the State Board of Education in 2020?" How about if we go to, let's see, how about this one? April 18th. "Mr. Marini, to clarify the record, I referred to a Reuters article in a previous message. It was actually a Politico article entitled 'Republicans: Education Wars'" Sorry, I didn't know yet. "'Republicans Eye New Front in Education Wars: Making School Board Races Partisan.'" How about Reuters? Same day, same email. "School Boards Get Death Threats Amid Rage Over Race/Gender/Masque Policies." You knew this. You knew it. I told you it. I told you this was coming, and it's happened exactly as predicted because it is an intentional disruption. I walked in here in January and told you that politics were affecting our boards of education in New Jersey. I've sent you the evidence, and now it's showing up in meetings. It's showing up in the correspondence, and our poor acting superintendent, who just wants to be a curriculum superintendent, no, like, you're doing a great job, sorry, but Dr. Faltri loves curriculum work. She loves it, and she has been doing this for our district for a year because we couldn't have oversight over our finances properly. And instead of, now I understand we can't talk about what happened in the past, but instead of dealing with oversight, instead of dealing with infrastructure, et cetera, we have seated board members and former board members who spin political wheels to, I don't know, get votes next time around, to piss people off so that they show up to meetings and complain? Guess what? I was pissed off in January. You have all of the evidence in front of you. You know that this is political nonsense, and if you have the audacity to come before this community next month and tell us anything different, I have receipts.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments from the public? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment, and I will open it up to the board if they would like to make any comments. Ms. Chuiyo.
I just have a few. So did the Hillsborough website get updated? I was on it tonight. Yeah, it was nice. All right, I just happened to be on it, it was very nice. Did we welcome the new high school principal? We appointed him tonight? Say again? Did we welcome, I mean, as in like, did we announce it? Did I miss it?
Did not.
Okay, so welcome to the new high school principal, Mr. Jeffrey Delillo. Also, I wanted to let the public know that the board candidacy petition is due on Monday, July 25th, at 4:00 p.m. to the Somerset County Board of Elections. And then I wanted to finally highlight a cool thing that our high school school counselor, Ms. Toby Fleig, FLEIG. All right, we were debating this, the pronunciation, so, okay, maybe I'm wrong. All right, so Ms. F-L-E-I-G was wonderful to host and has hosted for like so many years an information session with Outward Bound for rising 10th through 12th graders. And four Hillsborough High School students, my son was one of them, went on a 14-day hiking and canoeing trip, scholarship, all scholarship, so like, there was like one application fee, and had an amazing time, and they were all rising 11th graders for this. And they went with, I think the total's like maybe 24 students across New Jersey, and I just wanted to highlight her dedication. Like, she's been doing it for many years. I didn't even know about it because my older one was not interested, and my son heard about it and just thought like, wow, this is phenomenal. Highly recommend it, and it kind of goes to the SCL that you were talking about, social emotional learning, because, like, the students really had to learn to work together. I mean, the instructors, there were two instructors for their, like, they split into two groups of 12. The instructors kind of showed them what to do the first day, but then the rest of it was like all on them. So definitely a lot of learning from what I heard, but they survived and they came home, and it was just like all smiles. So if there are any Hillsborough students, any folks who are listening, definitely take a look at that for the future. I believe she holds the sessions like in the fall for like application due in like March timeframe. And then also, as a bonus, the middle school, they actually also have a program, also scholarship. It's called Get Out and Lead Goal. It's for rising, I believe, 8th and 9th graders. So my other child did that one too this summer. So that was, I just wanted to share because it was like such an amazing experience, and I just feel like people don't know about it. So, thank you.
Any other board comments? So I'll just address one comment about the funding we potentially are getting from the state. There is a rather large amount that we'll be getting. We do have some special guests that are joining us at the next meeting, and we'll present something more formally on that at the next meeting. So that was supposed to be this meeting, but we had to reschedule.
Cool, so did you want to address anything with respect to the package that we chose for the superintendency, or?
Yeah, so, I mean, the package included a certain amount of marketing at a certain level, so I mean, I don't want to go into any more details. It's...
Oh, I thought you wanted to maybe refer to, like, we chose the one that was going to go to like the diverse educators thing, like, there was a, right, like a...
It was a formal package that had a handful of different publications it was going to enter in.
Right, and it was going to address, I think, what Ms. Eldridge Howard and Reverend Williams...
Correct.
Yeah. No, it was.
I believe it was.
It was true.
Yes.
It did.
All right, we'll confirm if there's, if it's not correct, we'll update at the next meeting. All right, if there's no other comments from the board, I will move to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll see you next month. Thank you.